I want to ask my agenda.
Another one over there.
No.
I'll now call the September 27th Covert City Council special meeting to order at seven, at 6:03. So joining in person and by Zoom, the meetings are being recorded and live streamed.
Special ladies, here's a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, with this law that governs the citizens of this world.
Here's comments.
Let's roll real quick first.
Why don't we do that?
Hey, we have Councillor Alexander is absent. And Councillor Bell.
Here.
Councillor Blaine.
Here.
Councillor Fox.
Here.
Councillor Lehman.
Here.
Councillor McConnell.
Here.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Why would we put something almost well, third bigger than Barry Martin? It's just, it's my thoughts, my passion and all the time you said it, that numbers didn't paint a picture for me. But no idea why it was probably put there. There was some generic number or they studied it once before.
A 10,000?
Yeah.
It's the standard for what is already existent in the voting.
Right, so it's been there.
But the question is, why?
Is that standard?
Choose 10,000.
It was my understanding that that was so big box retail would go towards the freeway and not be in the downtown core. So that restriction for the 10,000 square feet of retail is just for the central business district downtown. And I'm not sure of the specifics, like I said, but it was my understanding that that provision was placed there to encourage big box retail. That are going to be ten thousand square feet and as each building footprint is within the code. It actually built two separate buildings.
That would be precluded in.
You could be having two buildings just separated by twenty feet. From any distance, it looks like a twenty thousand square foot building.
You could, and so long as they're they're holding to the lot size, the requirement lot size, they can have. Amount of buildings that they can build on the lot. I mean, you can build a lot of buildings on this back lot. But so are you talking about just the one business building? The buildings for the same business?
Or even.
That happens.
I mean.
You have one going up right now. It's industrial, but they're building two buildings, two separate buildings on the same lot.
Yeah, I mean, it could be two separate businesses. Buildings by. That that wouldn't bother me. I mean, I'm just talking about this.
With the expense and divide two, build two separate buildings to. Building.
Well, but they would still have to go through that formula based criteria. That is, I think it's pretty strict and really controls what we want. As also Bell said, availability of some other similar uses contribute to the small business and entrepreneurship. Consistent with unique historic character. And mutually beneficial to surrounding businesses. That covers a lot. Now that means that our planning commission has to do their job and be on top of this and hold them. It's in our, it's in our code if we pass. They should be held to it. And I think those potentials can all be answered by these five criteria.
Talks about outdoor recreation bases, common areas, plazas, street furniture. So I don't know if this is. Where we would put the limitation of footage.
Yeah, the way I'm reading this is this is just what information required, which is is like application requirements as opposed to.
So there is, we would add outdoor retail space though there. Into that is what I'm.
And I don't know if it's an attending, that's more like common areas. Talking about a secure fence scenario, you wouldn't want to, and we have businesses that. Just be part of the common area and having an actual fountain. You know, the thing that I I'm seeing is like, if it is like a hardware store, you have your outdoor lumber and whatever outside. If they would do a small retail side inside. I'd be worried for the neighbors and the noise and right, the aesthetics, right? That would concern. This downtown.
Oh, question.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to hear from city council members. What you think would be. What you think would be so important about having a ten thousand.
That's our current code, correct?
Yes, for for any retail.
I think that's where it came from. I'm I'm not answering your question exactly. I'm answer, I'm asking my own and I think they.
And my, my question is specifically to that area. What exactly? Would. You think, what would, what's the necessity of having that big of a building?
Can't answer that because I never thought about it properly until today when I asked for some mentions and wow. Why would we put something? Almost well heard bigger than Dairy Mart. So it's just, it's my thoughts, my passion and. All the time you said it, since bad numbers didn't paint a picture for me until today, but. No idea why it was probably put there. There was some generic number or they studied it once before.
A ten thousand?
Yeah.
It's the standard for what is already existent in the voting. This.
Right, so it's been there.
But the question is, why?
Is that some standard thing?
Choose ten thousand.
It was my understanding that that was so big box retail would go towards the freeway and not be in the downtown core. So that restriction for the ten thousand square feet of retail is just for the central business district downtown. And I'm I'm not sure of the specifics, like I said, but it was my understanding that that provision was placed there to. Encourage big box retail to go out towards the freeway. Also, just want to clarify that the footprint of Dairy Mart is about fifty five hundred square feet. So still. Significantly less.
Counselor McConnell, my answer to your question. And my experience is as soon as we limit it, we'll find somebody that comes in and has a good business that. Like to put in and they've been limited by us changing that side. But that's not necessarily the answer to keep a ten thousand square foot. If we're concerned about the size of the building in comparison to our historic district and the charm that we're looking for in our down.
So if I remember correctly, the reading, the height restriction or limit is forty feet. So.
Forty five.
Forty five, so you could have ten thousand square foot footprint. But what happens if you have a second floor?
Second floor does not count towards the square footage.
That's what I know. Well, somebody could have twenty thousand square feet. You know, more to the concern, it's going to be bigger than what you even imagined.
Except for we're limiting it to ten thousand. That's four space of ten thousand.
So it's not just the.
Or space.
Not the footprint then. It's a total.
That's the total floor space?
Total area of floor space and then previously it says some other provision says ten thousand square.
Their footprint, so we need to clarify what that is.
Yeah, we have a definition because that's a big difference if we're talking about. Thousand.
When you said big box, that's what popped in my memory on that.
Well, and maybe we change that ten thousand square feet retail space. Or space or footprint. We make it clear that if you're opening a store, store is limited to ten thousand.
But if they want to put a mixed use in, yeah, the mixed use.
But yeah, that would be fine because if the second story was residential, yeah.
It would look like the new Colbert again.
Yeah.
Absolutely. If we do our job right, it will look.
So what I'm hearing is that we want a clarification on a thousand square feet. And you want a limit to the outdoor limit retail space. So that's what you need to decide is. What is your retail space? The the building retail space, what do you want for that? And what do you want the limit on the retail space outside? Because we would have to change the wording to say. A thousand square feet of indoor retail space and so. Or outdoor.
Yeah. What?
So I, I cannot vote in favor to ten thousand square feet. I, I, I won't vote in favor. Imagine a retail space needed. That would fit the downtown. That we want. I, I, I can't imagine and I can't.
Counselor Glenn?
I, I was thinking, you know, if we. Figure out a number for the outdoor space, we can reduce that to seventy five hundred, maybe add. Some sort of hardware store or garden center or whatever grocery store, whatever that might be. But we can limit that box size down to seventy five hundred and make everybody feel a little bit better about that. Across the streets only fifty five, fifty four hundred and then have a little bit of outdoor space where it's not too much to like over that lot. That'd be something I'd be very interested in seeing what you guys think and if we change that. The other, the only issue I have with that or is are we going to really limit what wants to be here? And are we going to just have vacant land versus something that's actually useful and creating back stores? So that's kind of where I'm.
Fine, it's, it's just like when we look at at Bronco's alone. Have the outdoor space, the porch space, that to me is all retails. Which might be different than non-george.
Right, I mean, I'm thinking of.
After you're away from the building.
Right, that, I mean, they have eat. Right, but I'm just saying that you might want to treat that differently than you would treat. That's on the grass. That's not part of the building because Dairy Mart has a picnic.
Counselor Fox?
Uh, two things. One, uh, you get a this concept indoor-outdoor. Couldn't we have an operational definition of what the footprint is and the footprint includes this so that we just. Captured it that way, footprint is indoor-out. For the retail business. That's just to address that concept. And then I just had a question for Megan. The second and third floors. We had a three-story forty-five-foot building that could all be commercial.
Don't know off the top of my head. I, I think that it could be commercial. But I would need to double check that.
Way we write it could be that that's part of the ten thousand square feet.
Yeah.
Three thousand, three thousand, three thousand.
Well, so. Round this all up and figure out if we're going to be able to do anything with this tonight or we go to another. I'm seeing the ten thousand square feet definitely a challenge. In the outdoor space needing to be probably defined. Footprint. Or space. Anything else that counselors can think of?
And I just, like I said earlier, I'd love to see. What kind of businesses fit that seventy five hundred box versus a thousand square foot box? And are we going to lose the good opportunity for not a little more? Open to that, but at the same time, I prefer it be a smaller. Don't want to make a bad decision for the city.
Speaks to Counselor Lehman's question in particular on the appeal process of somebody. If a really great business came back and that their footprint wanted, they wanted that to be ten thousand five hundred. You can't do that, but if we leave it at, say, the maximum is ten thousand. And that, and what does that include? I think that gives us more latitude. And I don't want to make it so small that that nothing is going to happen.
And what? But do you, what do we know that needs a ten thousand square foot footprint? Because I can't, I can't think of anything other than. Orange grocery store. And one little store.
You said like the aces or trillions are usually understood.
Um, in fact, they. Did some research on it. It said that the aces were going towards even smaller floor, uh, floor prints. It was a model that was coming out of.
They have much like.
I don't recall what the. What we call that. You know, thinking of something like a gown to earth. That's a fairly small footprint. Well, the outside, yeah, the outside is large, but the actual building size is probably.
Saying, just to throw this out there, we're saying leave it at ten thousand, but that includes the outside space. Or no, I mean, the maximum is ten thousand or it's under ten thousand, actually.
If we could have a subcommittee of researchers and some others who sit down and draft. Have staff to.
I think we need to come back with some specifics about, so like Counselor Fox said. It's hard to imagine what that building would look like if we. If we looked at some actual businesses that were that big, envision. It's, it's hard to imagine, but if, if. The grocery store is fifty five hundred square feet. I, I'm like you, I can't even imagine ten thousand.
Nature, I'm guessing down to earth is six thousand square feet. Oh, anyhow, that's door.
Right, I don't want to. ourselves off and again, make this property secure and not be viable to a developer. Have a good neighbor. Servicing to this community. And I think. It's a substantial enough size to get that, but then we start looking at outdoor side, outdoor. Thing that do it. Really created some restrictions that I'm concerned about. So. At this point, again, we have the ten thousand foot measurement is an issue. We have whether it's a footprint, floor size or retail space size. Then the outdoor square footage, whether there is a limit. Or how we define what that is. Whether the second floor was part of the built. Conflicting language already. Are we going to limit that it's a commercial above the first floor?
Well, we could add that too, but I think what we heard was one place in the language. Footprint against ten thousand and another one talked about total space or space. So we need to verify that point too.
Well, I'm under the impression we're not going to be able to settle this tonight and. But I think. I think we're asking for a lot of meetings in time to a committee. I think the staff has good direction with this. Something comes up, then we can deal with it. But I just want to again, make sure that we don't have any other issues to deal with. Or space versus footprint. For space, whether we're going to limit it or how define it. In the ten thousand square foot. Is there anything else that counselors want to deal with?
Well, it's just really hard for us because we don't know what you're thinking about square footage. So. Asking us to not think about square footage and just think about the verbiage. And then you guys will just into square footage or are you leaning towards a square footage that? Because we ultimately want to come back with a.
Finished product.
A finished product so that we don't keep stringing this out.
Some information is to, what are some examples that we're familiar with that aren't ten thousand? We can say that building there is ten thousand. Usually see single floor, ten thousand building looks like that. The number, as far as the number goes, I think that's an easy change tonight. Get out three choices. But the other issue is defining floor space, defining footprint and what those are going to be used for. And we have commercial on the second floor of a mixed-use building.
Well, it clearly says for a formula and formula-based business. Limited. So, so commercial on a second floor. I mean, we have office buildings over here on the second floor. Um, within districts, so obviously you can on the second floor. I think that what. That's a separate.
That's a mixed use person.
The issue is that a retail space that we're going to put into definition and limit. Or is it floor space that we're not going to define and limit?
Aren't we just talking about?
We're only talking about.
Yes.
Business, so it's a limited floor space as it's written right now of ten thousand square feet. So that's what I'm saying is we're not talking about the rest of the district. We're only talking about the formula-based business.
And floor space includes the second floor.
You mean base, that's formula.
Formula-based.
Formula-based.
Businesses.
Businesses.
Okay.
We're only discussing the formula-based.
Those don't, those don't have, I mean, the ones that I'm picturing anyway, most of those in a ten thousand square foot box don't have a second story. Or any use. It's a warehouse, it's basically, yeah. It's definitely different than talking about.
So your question is, could they build a five thousand footprint that had five thousand upstairs and five thousand downstairs? I think they could. Yeah, I mean, unless you define it as it's one story only that is less than ten thousand square feet.
Technically, it's one of the things I can see and I've worked in a few of these types of buildings that are retail for space. But you also have a second story. Kind of almost a mezzanine level that has offices and storage and do help offset the floor space. And so that's, that's my concern is if we need a second story. And that may limit somebody in an otherwise. Commonplace building and, and not really. An issue for the architectural requirements on the outside.
We have other, we're, we're talking about formula, formulate based businesses right now. Um, but talking about outdoor retail space and limiting outdoor retail space. We have application coming in right now that is all outdoor retail space. So it is, it is a.
A building.
A building.
Well, I don't know how.
Formula-based business.
But it's not formula-based businesses. So that's what I'm saying is. You're only focusing in on that because that, that's a big difference if we're going out and we're changing other parts of the code, but are we only?
Well. Also, I'm down in this area, it can be formula-based or it can be formula-based, either one. I was under the impression we were taking these restrictions about any business going down there, not just identifying it to be.
That's, that's my concern.
So we can have a formula based one. Or it can be similar to what's happening, piece it together and have mixed use. Something that we won't want for formula based, even if it is very historic and beautiful and. Same. Yeah, is that you were thinking, on a square feet, if I would, or if it's that formula based?
Um, I think ten thousand square feet is, is. Too big for one business.
So I was thinking of down the formula based, uh, footprint of ten thousand square feet. I mean, chiefs is probably ten thousand square feet if we do two floors and the fenced in outside. It's thirty, thirty-seven hundred, it's, it's thirty-six forty, something like that.
On one floor?
On one floor, so then it's. Six thousand plus a thousand, eh, about seven thousand. So. It's a picture for it. So the idea is that we transport cheese down there. We would say yes to it if it's, uh, mom and pop business and no to it if it's Ace Hardware. I thought we were talking in general, we didn't want to have some of these. Conditions.
They won't say no to it if it's the Ace Hardware, they'll have to go through.
Where we couldn't say.
Well, look at the code on page nineteen, it says that under the central business district. Businesses that are permitted outright include personal services, childcare, catering. Restaurants up to a ten thousand square foot footprint. That's the non-formula based language, and I think that's language that we weren't touching. We weren't really looking at that, but I think that you're talking about is this other language that is not even part of what this project.
But once again, do we have criteria that we can send forward with staff? And, uh. The culmination of this next month.
So you're seeking formula based business, uh, seventy-five hundred square feet, you would hit? I thought that was in your letter, so I'm assuming.
I, I. Can't answer that. But I can't answer that. Um, because. I don't want to limit what we can do in the, in the downtown core, but I don't want us to be. Aware of what we may be allowing at ten thousand square feet.
Well, I think we're gonna have to like, keep it at ten thousand square feet and then say something about the exterior space. That way we're open, still have to go through the process, and it's something that planning commission knows how we feel, we work, we want to get it. And it'll eventually come.
Here.
So something will.
Yeah, the pro, the process would allow for a formula based business that we. Not really want to see it, you know, thousand square feet, that's, it's just too big.
Counselor Fox and Counselor Bill.
Counselor Blaine, you said, I have to keep it at that, that's just a number there, uh.
Not we have to, I'm saying, we, that, or like seventy-five hundred. Right. Side a number and then add the restrictions to the outdoor space. We'll have to, it's, it's gonna be really hard to say what we're gonna get for ten thousand or seventy-five hundred, what do we miss? Because then we're kind of predicting the future there. There's some a little move forward, we're gonna have to say, all right, we all just like ten thousand. Let's go to seventy-five hundred, or vice versa, I think we should.
With you on the seventy-five hundred and the outside space fenced in on top. As opposed to, uh, the brand is down there where you can sit.
Right. Yeah, I, I'm good with that, I think seventy-five hundred is a, is a fair number, and I think. You're out with outdoor space admission to it is. Seventy-five hundred and fifty, so ten thousand, I think it's.
And again, it is less than ten thousand square feet. I mean, that's, that's the formula based criteria, that's the conditional use, is less than ten thousand square feet. May be allowed if it does not adversely impact the character of downtown. Based on consideration of the following five criteria. And I think they're pretty explicit.
Once again, we've had the discussion, we still haven't made a point of ten thousand seventy-five hundred. Do we need clearer definition on floor space versus footprint? What are we gonna, how are we going to describe or define the outdoor space?
Counselor Blaine? So. We're not limiting the ten thousand on. We're discussing whether to limit. On the formula based, I think they both should be the same, whether it's seven, five hundred or ten thousand. Because might not to be able to recognize any difference between the formula based and the form based. Formula based to be at seventy-five hundred, if we're allowing the form based to be ten thousand.
Consistency.
Yeah, so if you wanna go to, but we can't go to seventy-five hundred on, on the form base, because it's already in our code to be ten thousand. So I would have to then say if it's already mandated. And for form based, it should be consistent with the formula based as well.
You're saying form based, are you talking about anything that's not formula based?
Correct.
All new development will be form based in the downtown.
Well.
I think what he's saying is everything that's not formula based business, so your run of the mill. Retail, whatever, has these limits also, and what you're saying is it could also be the same as what.
Well, those are ten thousand under current code, and. Right next door to it down here, and we're saying maybe we're gonna limit it to seventy-five hundred. I'm just saying that they should, should both be treated the same in terms of square footage. Because they can look the same from the outside. I mean, that shouldn't be the criteria, if we're gonna allow a ten thousand form based business there. We'd allow a ten thousand formula based business there as long as they meet those five criteria.
You keep saying in the current code, this, this is the proposed, uh, ordinance. Mending the code, so we could easily just say the downtown area limit is now seventy-five hundred feet. Would that be?
Changing a lot. What I was trying to explain is that that piece was something that hasn't been looked at since day one in this. Even on the table, and then through the discussion tonight, we kind of threw it into the mix.
Okay, I think we need to stick with. Okay, that's, that's where it is.
And I was just pointing out that the form based code is not related to use. A form based code is, are the building standards that will be required for every use.
Right.
Including formula based business or just small business entrepreneurial type retail.
Okay, is there going to be? Date that the outdoor space be part of whatever the square footage. Thousand seventy-five hundred and five thousand.
Kind of like the indoor, so formulate, formula based business can be up to ten thousand, we're not plus, not more than ten thousand square feet. Of which, uh, the re, space is included in that. Some perfect space.
The outside is the space would be included in that ten thousand.
So you can have, uh, two thousand square foot business that have eight thousand square foot retail space total. Two thousand, building can be up to ten thousand and or building and retail space up to ten thousand.
Of a total footprint.
You don't limit the retail space, outdoor retail space to be a certain number because. Might be a business that has a very small footprint, but has a very large retail space. So it's an and or building up to ten thousand square feet and or building and outdoor retail space up to ten thousand. I don't love the idea of a huge outdoor space, I mean, because I don't know what kind of business that would be. You're looking at like a parlumber with a tiny little office and then a bunch of outdoor space, but. Uh, isn't, that isn't.
That wouldn't, that wouldn't fit in the criteria.
So you look at, uh, Grace Sweeten Sea or somebody like that, that has huge outdoors. Flowers.
Then you. Saying, I, I.
That we're allowed for the form based businesses. Which could look exactly like a formula based business from the outside.
That we have enough information to send to staff. So I'm going to ask them next. You guys.
I just wanna make a clarification. So when you're looking at the code, this is form based. So this is what we asked for to be added to our code. The form base is giving the design standards for any building. It doesn't matter what building it is, whether it's formula based or a mom and pop florist. They're gonna have to follow form based code, and that's what that looks like, so. Uh, the, form base is something that's across the board. Formula based are businesses that are changed. I just want to make sure that that clarification is, so. There's formula based businesses and everything else. So, um. Form base is simply the design standard.
Dan Council, any other, uh, direction that you want to give?
What direction are we giving them?
I, I've got the list here again.
Okay.
Now, what I have is the question of ten thousand square feet. And how do we deal with the addition of outdoor? Retail space? Is that part of the lemon? What is the description of that outdoor retail, the definition?
I think we, up with definitions of outdoor space, if we had direction on. Know what your limit idea was, so, so if you're saying ten thousand square feet. Of which no more than twenty-five hundred can be outdoor retail space. That's us, uh, but.
That what we're looking for?
I'm, well, not in favor of the ten thousand square feet, it's not here.
I think the, uh. Issue of footprint and floor size.
Footprint or the total square footage of the building?
I've heard floor space and floor size, and the footprint. Footprint to me is the size of the foundation.
Yep, yeah.
That's what it is. And then we start looking at floor size, well, if you go up to a second floor, you double your space, but it's not doubling your footprint. We need to be clear that when we're using these descriptions, that we're not. Whether we want to, or whether we want to exclude it, that we aren't using. Footprint in the wrong place to define any restrictions or. Limits that we want to put on this.
We need a definition on that, what we're really talking.
That's what I have from Mr. Scott.
What is our consensus on that? I think we've heard a little bit both ways. Heard some people say, I'm fine with. Thousand square feet on the, on the footprint, if they wanted to put a mezzanine or a second. Or on there that exceeded. The ace foot.
To give the staff direction.
So. Hundred feet by one hundred feet is a ten thousand footprint, and it could go up to forty-five feet, which would be three store. You could have three stories and it would be formula based business and limit. Thirty thousand square feet of, uh. You definitely need a limiter on that, because.
Which is.
Not that it would ever happen.
I was arguing, if we allowed them to go ten thousand five hundred square feet, maybe they wouldn't do the second floor from the beginning. We had that flexibility. Well, their floor spaces can be limited to. Well, yeah, but are we, I mean, are we saying they can't do that or they can't?
Well, I think we have to have the definition, yeah, first. And then the decision is what you're asking, have councilors give their input on it. And.
But our input gives the definition, and we can define it, how we want it to be.
Right. And again, that's why the floor size and footprint, we can clearly define, because we could have, as you described. Thirty thousand square foot floor space, forty-five feet.
Mister man. I said, this was supposed to be the second reading to.
The councilor disagreed.
Thoughts now?
Please, go ahead.
Robert Lamont, as you know, I'm one of the owners of that property and stuff. What's wrong with a ten thousand square foot, uh, footprint, if it was broken into like four businesses? Like a mixed use building, or just residential, maybe head, or I mean, commercial on the bottom had residential on top, I mean.
It's nothing that.
Well, it sounds like you're saying you're gonna limit the footprint of the building down, and.
Or retail space, but not for mixed use space.
But, okay, what if you had that ten thousand square foot building and it broke into four different retail spaces? Like twenty-five hundred apiece, and it was all in one footprint of a hundred by hundred, or whatever size it was. And I'm saying, if you go to the seventy-five hundred, again, you're shooting yourself in the foot. I mean, you've got the criteria there where you guys can judge that and make it, but the building could still be a ten thousand square foot building on the footprint. You could have residential on top, or you could have offices on top, you could go to a second story down there.
Just talking about the chain stores, that you can still do. Yeah. You still have ten thousand, still have multi use.
Oh, I think you can do that.
We're talking, that's the formula based. All in general, Ace Hardware, what is, what would we limit them to be?
The chain stores are what we're looking at.
Okay.
Not mixed use. The, the form, form based and formula based, the formula based are the chain stores.
Okay, right.
The form based is the overall rule that we're, we're living by.
Okay.
We adopt it.
It's form based about the building.
Ten thousand square feet. In the current, in the code, if we accept it as it is now. In the current, in the code, if we accept it as it is now. And. Put something above it, commercial, mixed, commercial, residential.
That's allowed.
Yeah.
Okay.
But what we're grappling with is whether it's ten thousand on the first floor and ten thousand on the second floor. So a three story target going in.
Well, yeah.
We're talking about the ten thousand square feet for a chain store, not for mixed use, not for. Started envisioning ten thousand, ten thousand, ten thousand, you could have thirty thousand square foot buildings.
The ask is written right now, and I think all we need to define is definition. As it is written right now, a formula is. Base business must be under ten thousand square feet. That is in. Does that, that is in the conditional use.
Of the total or the?
The total. Or space of a retail space.
Criteria.
Yeah, so the question that I've always thought it was, are we okay with ten thousand square foot floor space or would more, less than ten thousand square foot? Space, I think we got way off on the. Tears and what? Question is still the same.
No, I'm just trying to decipher there whether the footprint could still, still be ten thousand square foot for the footprint on a form based business.
Yes.
Yes.
And what she just said there is with with what you said about target going three stories high, that can't happen. Because it's limited to ten thousand. And I get that, okay. I just didn't want to be, if we're gonna go down to seventy five hundred square feet, I didn't want the. Footprint of the building to be limited to that. If we could break it into multi-use, maybe ten shops or something in a. Uh, ten thousand square foot building type thing. And so, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay, uh. I'd like to do a round table on this. Right, obviously. Uh, Counselor Fox, you had already expressed some concern.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna have to go back on it now since uh. But, you know, also uh. Donald's concerns. Down to seventy five hundred feet and. How I get to go up to ten thousand? You know, I just wanna, I wanna get this done with.
Your comments and through the staff to help us. Other issues you want? Counselor Bell.
I, based on um the criteria. I would go with less than ten thousand square feet may be allowed. Does not adversely impact the character of downtown.
Any other comment?
No, because I I think it's really well defined in the conditional use.
Counselor Layman.
I I would go with the ten thousand square feet that includes. Outside retail space as part of the ten thousand.
I would agree with that. Thank you for that clarification.
I'm gonna agree with Counselor Layman and Bell also that uh I think the ten thousand with the outdoor additional. Up to that cap of ten thousand, less than. Like, I agree with that as well. I think uh ten thousand with the outdoors. Sounds for. Thank you, counselors.
So we might be able to. Reword this and. And get it done.
I mean.
Yep.
Yeah, it it is retail space.
You'd like a few minutes?
No, let's, let me say, I I missed what you were just talking about, but let me just say something and. You can decide whether you need to add more to it. Um, so the conditional use. Um, formula based business language is formula based businesses with a total area of floor space less than ten thousand square feet comma. Which shall include outdoor retail space. Then decide what outdoor retail space.
There you go.
And then you have the option to add um. Retail space to be included in the plan.
Yeah.
They turn in. But that would have to be another addition.
Um, and then prohibited, yeah, I'm just trying to think whether we need to change the prohibited language. Currently says formula based businesses with a total area of floor space of ten thousand square feet or greater. That's good.
Yes.
Um, so. Current code. Uh, some businesses do conditional uses. Um, subsection nine to read formula based businesses with a total area of floor space less than ten thousand square feet comma. Which shall include outdoor retail space. The prohibited uses sub. Eight. Shall read formula based businesses with a total area of floor space of ten thousand square feet or great. Shall from outdoor retail space.
Why do you even need to say that? Okay.
What's that? Anything that's greater, well, so you got the subset.
They could have a building. That's the other change.
Oh, say that again. I didn't know. I thought we were gonna. Oh, I don't. So that's in the um. Requirements. Yes, yes, yeah, let's, let me just read that out too, so we know what, what's been changed.
And if you flip through and look at that orange, look at that orange table.
Looking for the application requirement section. Uh, okay. So. Article. Eleven. Just, I'm going back to make sure I get the subsections right. Article eleven. Section capital E. Two B subsection ten. Outdoor recreation spaces, common areas, plazas, outdoor seating. Street furniture. So that's what. I'm a retail space outside of the building. The building footprint. More improvements. Exactly what you had.
It's exactly what's in the red folder.
Thank you. I don't get to decide.
Have you finished your part then? Got all the notes and no more discussion? I'll entertain emotions.
I move to adopt. Two hundred L, in ordinance amending. Code for the central business district. Zoning code. Concerning the. Spaces, common areas, plaza, outdoor seating, street furniture. Retail space outside of the building footprint and other.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Layman and a second by Counselor Bell to adopt ordinance A two hundred L amending article seven point C. Of the covert zoning code to implement a form based code for central business district and implementing. Updates through the zoning code. All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
This is three to one. Just wanna say. First of all, thank you, Counselor McConnell, for standing up for what you believe in. Uh, it's a, it's a tough thing to be a public uh person and and have to make your decisions in front of everybody, but. That's what this job is, and that, that makes us a good counsel because we do that. I appreciate that. Also appreciate Counselor Fox and the work that other citizens put into this many, many hour. Staff that has hung in there. Thank you very much. It's a, it's a huge win. Okay, uh. Big bowl liquor license, Sammy.
Oh, I have a couple items here. And this is an OLCC license for the Hodge Board Company. Doing businesses, the Brave Bowl. They are asking for a liquor license at nine one 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 five North Bullamette Street, which is formerly Morello's. Um, anytime there's a business change, OLCC requires a license. The city has a fee that we charge for the application. Um, city council. Has the authority to recommend. That OLCC grant the license or recommend that it is not granted. Which has to be done usually through your police chief because it's. Not land use issues, it's more. Um. More. More issues with. Um.
Unfortunate.
Not unfortunate, yeah. That would be good. So you get to look at these license annually. If there is a problem that arises at an establishment in Coburn. Um, you can work with the chief if there's concerns through. Has the opportunity um annually to recommend that they're not renewed. Most of the license application is attached. You guys are used to seeing a lot more of the applications, but. Um, we are really working on redacting a lot of the personal information that's required on these applications. What we're asking for tonight is a recommendation to OLCC.
Questions from council.
I have a a question. General question. Well, many of these. Um, licenses. Suggested with a small community of our size.
I don't, I don't think that it's, that would be something that would be regulated through the state, but I don't know that. There's different kinds of licenses. I do know, you know, for selling it in the stores, um. Some customers truck and travel have a few different kinds of um liquor license that they annually renew, but I don't know of a number.
This is a place that was already licensed.
And that is currently licensed. The Hodge Pod is right across the street also, so we do have. They're also the owners of chief, so we do have a current business license or a current. OLCC license with a liquor license.
Other questions from counselors? Not all entertain a motion.
I move that we accept the application.
The second.
Second.
There's a motion by Counselor Fox and the second by Counselor Bell to recommend OLCC grant the Hogboard Company. The liquor license for the Brave Bowl located at nine one 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 five North Willamette Street. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
This is unanimously. This committee. What audit finance committee.
Hi, Don Kathy. I didn't realize you were gonna be here tonight, or I would have had you present this. Um, you guys all remember. I always say her name wrong, so it's Elise that um joined our budget committee. Um, she was approached to, or she had talked earlier when she applied that she was also interested in doing the finance oversight committee, but wanted to talk to people about the time. Commitment. She went ahead and put her application in. She went to our last finance audit committee um meeting, which they interviewed and recommended. To counsel that she be appointed to the position. Her application's attached. And she meets all qualifications.
Yeah. Questions from councilors? All entertain a motion. Move that we accept the application. Lee Sundry for the finance audit committee. Second. There's a motion by Counselor Fox and a second by Counselor Lehman to recommend Mayor Smith appoint Elise Landry to the finance audit committee to fill current two-year term expiring. On six thirty twenty twenty-three. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
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 Unanimously. Under the powers granted me in the charter, it is my privilege to appoint. Elise Landry to the finance audit committee to fill the current two-year term expiring on six thirty twenty twenty-three. Thank you. Brian.
Good evening. First, first I gotta say just one quick thing. I've been involved in local government for over twenty years. And the discussion tonight, I just, I absolutely love it, even though it, it took a little bit, but uh. I mean, how can you not like good debate and, you know? Anyway, I'm here to talk about pickleball.
Oh, yeah.
Switch topics a little bit. There's been quite a bit of uh discussion about. A pickleball court going in at Norma Pfeiffer Park. So. We did a little uh information only um staff report. And kind of uh. I might just hit the high, high point, so we don't talk about pickleball all night. Um, but in two thousand and one. We had a, a citizen come to the Parks and Trees Committee. Um. And initiate the conversation of creating a pickleball court. In Coburn. So the discussion quickly went to where do we locate this? And um the court at Norma Pfeiffer. Uh, was clearly the best option. So then we decided. How do, how do we? How do we? Uh, reconfigure the, the existing court to be able to play pickleball. There on a concrete surface. So our options were um. Just paint lines on the concrete. It's not really conducive to playing pickleball. Option two was to resurface, and that seemed like a very expensive option. So I came up with option three, which was kind of a portable court. Um, this court can be. Placed, not removed or removed. Um. And everything was going along uh. Quite nicely. Well, we were just waiting for the net to install the court. Some questions came up. Whether or not um. I didn't feel comfortable. Events on it. Um, and that sort of thing. And. We knew that this court is a, is a tile type, type court. So it can be removed, uh but we, we haven't put it in, so we don't know how. Time-consuming or cumbersome. The installation and removal each time an event came in would be. So. After doing. Search, uh, we did find out that you can park or drive on the Versa Court uh tiles. It, it is. Acceptable to do that. Do we want to do that um on a daily basis? Probably not. It probably won't hold up to uh aggressive, heavy traffic like that. But occasionally during special events, it's, it is possible to do that. I might recommend to the Parks and Trees Committee at a later time that, you know, if, if, if an event wants to park on it, they may have to put some rubber mats down and protect the surface. That sort of thing. But you can do that. The reason why we went with the Versa Court is because you can, it's a. Versatile court, so you can play basketball on it, you can play pickleball on it, you can dance on it, you can. Do anything you want on it. And now come to find out you can park on it. So. Um. In our first design with the court, I had them. Add in the basketball lines. So after the designer got back to me, the, there was, it was just very chaotic with. The three-point line and the free throw line and the pickleball lines. So we eliminated the basketball lines. Knowing that um. Folks that play basketball don't really play a game out there. They just go out there and shoot hoops. So we eliminated the lines and just kept the pickleball lines on the court. So, like I said, you still play basketball on it. But the pickleball court needs lines to be able to play pickleball. So that's why we kept the. It's. What I would call a hybrid net. So a lot of pickleball courts have fixed nets where the tension keeps the net um tied across the playing surface or the playing area. And so they're not removable. The one that we went with is removable, but it also keeps the, the net as tight as possible. So. Um, we can remove it during those special events. Um, and that really is in an. Uh, it, in a nutshell. Um. I just wanted to, I was hoping that all the councilors were here to. Um, hear the conversation uh. That we can have tonight about the pickleball court. But I just wanted to. Give you guys a little bit of information uh and kind of clear the air on uh what is going on at the basketball court. Does anybody have any questions? Yes, ma'am.
So the net.
Mm-hmm.
Is it removable, easily removable to play basketball? No?
So the, the way that we designed the court is that you can play pickleball. The net will be in the center of what we would call the basketball court. So. Obviously, if somebody's playing pickleball, you can't play basketball. The court's not big enough. But. If no one is playing pickleball, you certainly can uh play basketball. We've never seen anyone play a full-court basketball game. It's normally one end or the other. Does that answer your question? Okay. Yes, sir.
I don't believe I've ever seen vehicles on the basketball court.
It does not happen very often, but once a year.
During the car show?
Yes, sir. Anybody else have any questions?
I just have a statement that I think. This is going to be something that we should be looking at. As possibly a policy decision on what we're gonna do, investing money in the services and then having cars drive. As something for down the road with the Parks Committee. Investments that we have in preserving those investments. Still accommodating the festivals and things.
We can absolutely do that. Yep. You bet. Um, so. My suggestion is go out and buy your pickleball racket and pickleball balls and the net. Should be here any day. I was promised it would be here by September twelfth and. We're now at the end of September. Yes, sir.
Has anybody asked about?
Uh, occasionally we get a request to replace the net. Um. Uh, so we do that, uh, I think on an annual basis.
The backboards are in pretty good shape.
This, yeah. Uh, well, we haven't heard any complaints about the basketball backboards themselves. Yes, ma'am.
Oh, it's, is um. For the people who have apparently complained about it and women that. I guess if someone's complained, we wouldn't be here explaining it to us tonight. A little lay their concern.
Uh. And I'm doing it the next Parks and Trees Committee. So yes, it will be addressed. But I wanted to make sure that. The city council, who is the governing body. Knows what's going on. Yes, sir.
Are there any outdoor lights there?
There actually is. Um, I don't think it works. Um, but when, when I was lining up the pickleball court, um, actually. I've been working here since two thousand thirteen. Uh, so was this a year ago? I looked up and. Well, behold, there's a light right there. I, I know it doesn't work because no one's ever complained about the light being on. So. I'm not sure what's, how the city council feels about that. We're gonna see that, that's why.
Oh, don't like trespass. I don't want it.
Thank you, everyone.
Questions for Ann on the administration report? Well, update on the um. Crack ceiling.
Sure.
Streets.
Uh, so we actually did the walkthrough with the business that, that, and pointed out areas that they missed. Um, and their actual owner came out and. Areas they missed. And so uh they. Were coming back out, and I believe, were they there today?
They've done a.
They are coming, they, they were supposed to come back out and then there'll be another walkthrough before it's finalized. They, they will come back and Brian can probably answer that.
But yeah, yes. Um, we'll probably do a final walkthrough with them. Uh, I do want to uh just um put your guys to give a little context to um preservation versus. Uh, reconstruction or um. Preservation of con, uh, of asphalt. Usually ends up looking like what you see down there. I know that it's probably not the most attractive uh look. Um, but it does do its job. And that is what we were after when we talked about preservation. Now. As we move forward, uh, we will look at seal coating over the top of the cracked seals. Uh, to give it a better, a better uh look, uh feel. Uh, when I talk about feel, I talk about, you know, the ride of the street. Um, but. If we left it like it is, we just bought into the investment of the asphalt that was there. So we're preserving what we have. Uh, to make it last as long as we can. Because we know that the cost of preservation versus reconstruction is huge. So um, I know it. This. That. Four or five months from now. Um, those lines will still be there, but you won't notice them as you drive. Um, because th- they will just kind of, uh, eventually they'll blend in. They're new because they're shiny. Um, and that's usually how human nature is, what you're seeing. So. I just wanted to kind of. Put that out there. No, it's not attractive, but it is doing its job.
It looked like the very first time they went through, they did a very narrow one.
Okay, so.
Came back and it's a little wider now.
Right. So uh, I wish I would have been here. I was on vacation when this, when this preservation project happened, but. Because vision hasn't happened uh prior to this. What ends up happening is those cracks become a little bit deeper. So that emulsion, that rubber goes in um. A little bit deeper in the valley. Um, so. It, it's getting down. There's doing its job, but you do see that, that little bit of a dip. That's why they came back. They were going to come back regardless and. And go back over everything and try and fix. You know, those little valleys. So, you know, when you. On a newer street, let's say Hatfield, if you crack seal Hatfield. That seal might look a little wider because the emulsion's going away from the crack and not into the valley. Does that make sense? The crack's smaller on a newer surface. So the quicker you can get to preservation, the better the look is. Um. The older asphalt gets, the harder it is to preserve because it's um. Uh, we call it ravelling. So it looks just kind of like uh. Uh, like minus rock sticking up. So it's really hard to get uh what I would call their squeegee brush. It's kind of looks like this. And when they push it down, that, that coarse surface kind of drags and you get the, the. Best word to describe it, little, little streaks, right? So on a newer surface, you're gonna get that smoother look across the, the uh preservation. One of the reasons why we chose to do this is because it is older asphalt and it, it needed to be preserved. So that's why that, that looks the way it did.
I thought they worked pretty hard on it.
They. I did talk to the owner and uh he made sure that he was back out here on day three. To uh make sure that the things that they did miss were taken care of. Does that answer any questions about? Preservation? We're gonna see a lot more of preservation projects because they are, like I said, a lot cheaper than reconstruction or overlaying. So just so you know, when we do an overlay, we have to crack, we have to seal the cracks anyway. So the preservation has to happen before you do anything over the top of that.
This question, how long between the, the crack seal? How long is the crack seal good for? I mean, if, if it was. Thirty years before you do an overlay, is that still?
Yeah, so that's a great question. It, it would probably be on, in that residential area. I would say five years. So it buys us five years of life. Uh, or five years to uh start the, the funding cycle over. Um, that sort of thing. But if we can seal coat it. That adds us an, another amount of time. So every time we do a preservation. It just buys us more time before we have to spend money on reconstruction. Yes, ma'am.
I have a different preservation question.
Uh-huh.
Um, will the bike hub get um a seal coat or something on?
That is a great question. I actually talked to that contractor today and I should have asked him. But I was talking with the contractors that were doing the water main on McKenzie at the time. We will follow up with the contractor again and see where we're at with that. He did promise us that he would get back to that project and make sure that that was taken care of. Thank you.
Brian. Anything else for the administration report? Obviously, our water reservoir peaceability uh presentation is. Be next month, hopefully. So uh. You, we are pretty much done. I just wanted to ask the councilors and sit on the ends of the table. This is your second month now. How is the knees?
Great.
What? Oh, it's fine.
There's no banging. It's wonderful.
After nine years, I finally got a move.
Oh, wow. Those things are gone. No wonder I can swing around.
Yeah, yeah.
Those of you that don't sit back here, the people on the end only had a space that was twenty-two inches wide. There's a divider in there. And now I've moved it third so that. The notorious thing was you always pulled your chair up and banged your knee into that divider. Two months ago, I got it switched out and finally moved it. That I've been promising for nine years now.
It took less time than the pickleball. On, on the, for next month's presentation. I just, the uh suggested locations of the water tower.
Did you get any uh closure on the issue? Uh. With the Otto's. Um. Spew with uh. Things.
He just said, okay.
Yeah.
Then we're gonna write a letter. To.
They, they, they just said, I said no, the council said no, and they.
In terms of uh. Person who was. Instigating, I guess, the dispute. We were sending a letter to them.
Yeah.
I did, I haven't done it.
It's okay.
But it sounds like maybe it was taken care of without the letter.
But it sounds like maybe it was taken care of without the letter.
But maybe that's the question, so I got, I did get direction to write a letter and then I think next day or two days later it got resolved, so. The question is, do I write the letter?
Yeah.
If it's resolved, it's resolved.
I I think that we thought it was resolved because they didn't even argue. They just, I said, you can't do this, the council won't, you know, and they were like, okay. So they they definitely, and I think that they're. A person that they thought they were going to put there pulled out, so it was less of an argument. But the other piece is that we moved the box. Where we plugged the spider box in under the city, so. So the city has the power pole. The pole, it's a city rather than. At the midpoint, yeah. They invited us to do that. You guys can go ahead and put it in your name. It doesn't use power unless somebody's plugging into it. So it would be plugged into it a little bit.
All right, any other comments or questions from councillors? This meeting is adjourned at seven fifty-three. Thank you.
Good job.